Anybody to sit down? We'll call the January 12th Metropolitan Planning Commission Meeting to Order. I want to welcome everyone for coming down. We appreciate it. We've got a long agenda, so hopefully we can get through this pretty quickly. And I apologize for the wait if you're at the end of the agenda, but we'll make it through it. So first is the adoption of the agenda. Has everybody reviewed the agenda? Is there any edits, corrections? Take a motion to adopt the agenda. Spin a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Now we're on to Item C, which is the approval of the December 8th 2016 minutes that were mailed to you prior to the meeting, and I hope that you all reviewed those. Any questions, edits, comments?
Motion approved.
There's been a motion to approve. And a second for the December 8th minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Ayes have it. The minutes have been adopted. Now we are on to the recognition of council members. Item D, and I wrote down who I saw first, just whoever I saw. And then first I saw Councilman Scott Davis. Do you want to speak now or during your items? Come on up. Appreciate you coming down today.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, fellow council member. Thank you, planning staff, for your hard work. I have two items on consent today. The first one, let's look at the East Nashville Amendment of the Community Plan. First of all, I want to thank Anita and her staff for coming out to my community meetings. I want to thank my community members who live in my district, who own property in that area, and I just want to thank them for coming out and supporting me. Of course, you'll mostly recognize our Chair Emeritus for Cleveland Park Neighbors, Sam McCullough there, who is in support of this. And I just want to thank the staff for working with us. And I want to thank Doug also for his new staff hires, and Carrie Logan. I like the new staff members. They're going to be a good adage to the department. And I also want to thank the heads of the Planning Department and the planning staff and the chairperson of the Planning Commission, you know, for looking at diversity, hiring minorities and women, and making that a priority. And that doesn't get pointed out a lot, you know, and I'm allowed, I figure I'm allowed to talk about it, you know, but I know you're modest, but when you do good, I point it out. So I want to make sure to thank the planning, the whole Planning Commission and staff for hiring women and minorities. When other departments, you know, we need to pray for a little harder, but I'm glad you're doing it. Last but not least, I'm here in support for a MUI for Cowan Street Development. The owner, Donald Day, is unable to be here, but he does have a representative here today. And one thing, though, is I know we've seen a lot in the news about Cowan. I believe this will be the ninth rezoning in action for the area. There's been a lot of them, and it's going to be a beautiful riverfront. Thank you, Doug and Carrie, for your support over the years. And what an eloquent quote, Mr. Sloan, you had in the papers, you know, much well-deserved. And just thank you for all the Commissioners for your support of my district. If it wasn't for the Commissioners and the great planning staff and our great mayor, I wouldn't be able to do this and bring help and the help of my neighbors for this great riverfront. And I just sincerely, from the bottom of my heart, blessed to have staff members and community members like you serving on this commission. And please support and keep these bills on consent.
Thank you, Councilman. And speaking of staff members, I appreciate you saying such nice things, but we do have a few new staff members. If you haven't seen their bios, I do want to introduce them. And so Dara Sanders, is she here? Dara, welcome. Also, Anna Greider. Thank you for coming, guys. And then Abby Rickoff is new as well, and I just wanted to make sure that you all knew and we introduced them to the public. So thank you and welcome. We appreciate you all joining the planning team, and make sure Doug will take good care of you. So, sorry, I was out of order. I do apologize. But now I saw Kathleen Murphy, Council Lady. Do you want to speak now or later?
Later.
Okay. Excellent, Council Lady. And I also saw Council Lady Nancy Van Reese. Come on up, Council Lady. Good to see you.
Happy New Year, everybody. I have three things on the consent agenda in District Eight, and I'm very proud of each and every one of them. I just wanted to let you know that. That's number six, the re-division of the subdivision. And I know that you guys worked a lot with the applicant and the staff worked a lot with the applicant in regard to this, and I'm glad that we finally have something that the community as well as the staff is excited about. Also, number 11, the Hillside Development. This part of District Eight is continuing to grow, and we're very excited about this in adding a diversity of housing type in the area. And then finally, the Bayshaw Village, number 17. First of all, I appreciate you allowing the applicant to go ahead and name this. Bayshaw is a family name. It's very near the Bayshaw Cemetery, which is a historic location over on Old DuWes. And after talking with the family, there's going to be a whole lot of interesting things that you're going to hear about with the name Bayshaw. So this is the first of some of those things, so thank you for that and for the applicant in regard to, even in a small development, acknowledging the historic aspect of the area. So with all three of those, we've had at least one community meeting, some of them two, and lots of great discussion and have had nothing but full support of all three, so I just want to let you know that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Lady. Any other council members? Well, and I do apologize, we have such a turnover in the Planning Department. We also have another new planning staff since the meeting started. But Jean Burse, if you'll raise your hand, welcome. Welcome. Hopefully, we won't have that much turnover, and I know that you all are committed to stay five years, so that's good. I'm just kidding. I'm just joking. But we really do welcome the team. I really do welcome the team, so thank you for letting me go out of order. Any other council members? I didn't see any. Okay. Well, let's go to Item E, Items for Deferral and Withdrawal.
Yes, we have many items for deferral, starting with Items 1A and 1B. 1A is Case 2016 CP-002-001. This is a request to amend the Parkwood Union Hill Community Plan, and the staff recommendation is to defer to the January 26, 2017 Planning Commission Meeting. The associated zone change with that is Item 1B, Case 2016 SP-089-001. This is a request to rezone from CS and RS 20 to SP for properties located at 4045 Dickerson Pike and Dickerson Pike Unnumbered, and the request is to defer to the January 26 Planning Commission Meeting. Item number two is Case 2016 Z-024 TX-001. This is a request to amend the zoning code pertaining to sidewalks, and staff recommendation is to defer to the January 26 Planning Commission Meeting. Item number three, Case 2007 SP-150-001. This is the Evans Hill SP located at Tulip Grove Road and Valley Grove Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 26 Planning Commission Meeting. Next item on the deferral list is Item 4A, Case 2016 SP-081-001. This is a request to rezone from SCN and SP for property located at Old Hickory Boulevard to permit, this is in Bellevue, to permit a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 26 Planning Commission Meeting. The associated case is 4B, Zone Chain, or Plan Unit Development 95P-009-001, the Nashville Highlands Plan Unit Development. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 26 Planning Commission Meeting. Next item is Item 5, Case 2016 SP-095-001. This is the Clay Street Properties SP, a request to rezone from OR 20 and R 6 to SP zoning located at Clay Street and Dominican Drive and Fourth Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 26 Planning Commission Meeting. Next item is Item 7, Case 148-81P-001. This is the Holiday Village Plan Unit Development located at 201 Grisard Avenue, and staff recommends to defer indefinitely. Next item is Item 12A, Case 2016 SP-093. This is a request to rezone from R 40 to SP zoning on property located at Hill Road to permit up to 31 residential units. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 Planning Commission Meeting. The associated case is 12B, 14-79P-001. This is the Hearthstone Residential PUD cancellation request, and the staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 Planning Commission Meeting. Next item is Item 15, 2017 SP-005-001. This is a request to rezone from MUN SP zoning on property located at Fifth Avenue North to permit a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 Planning Commission Meeting. Next item is Item 16, Case 2017 SP-006-001. This is the Scoville Street Row Homes, a request to rezone from R 6 to SP zoning on property located at Scoville Street to permit 26 residential units. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 26 Planning Commission Meeting. Next item is Item 18, Case 2017 SP-014-001. This is the Harpeth Village SP. This is a request to rezone from RS 40 to SP zoning on property located at 7725 Old Harding Pike to permit 25 residential units, and the staff recommendation is to defer to the January 26 Planning Commission Meeting. Next item is Item 19, Case 2017 S-009-001. This is a request for final plat approval to shift lot lines and remove a reserve status on property located on perimeter Hill Drive and Antioch Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 26 Planning Commission Meeting, and I will note on Item 19 that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself. Next item is Item 20, Case 2017 S-010-001. This is a request for a subdivision amendment approval to amend the subdivision notes seven and eight on property located at Edmondson Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 26 Planning Commission Meeting. Next item is Item 21, Case 2017 S-012-001. This is a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property located at Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 26 Planning Commission Meeting. And the last item on the deferral list is Item 22, Case 2017 S-026-001. This is a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property located at Plum Street. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely.
Thank you, sir. So let's go through the list slowly so that we can make sure we have all the correct items. So it's Items 1A, 1B, 2, 3, 4A, 4B, 5, 7, 12A, 12B, 15, 16, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So you've heard the items that are for deferral or withdrawal. Is there a motion to defer? Spin a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Ayes have it. Those are the items that have been deferred. We are on to Item F, Consent Agenda.
And before I get to the consent agenda, as information for our audience, if you're not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. And as notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So as I read the following items, please raise your hand or let us know if you'd like one of these items removed from the consent agenda. Starting with Item Number 6, Case 2016 S-160-001, on page 6 of the agenda. This is a request for final plat approval to create two lots on property located at Curdwood Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item is Item 8, Case 2017 CP-005-002. This is a request to amend the East Nashville Community Plan by amending the community character policy on various properties. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item is Item 9, Case 2015 SP-056-002. This is a request to amend the Oceola Park Specific Plan District on property at Oceola Avenue to permit 13 residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is Item 10, Case 2015 SP-090-003. This is a request to amend the Oceola Place Specific Plan District on property located along Oceola Avenue as well to permit up to nine residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is Item 11, Case 2016 SP-078-001. This is a request to rezone from RS 10 to SP zoning on properties located at Hillside Road to permit up to 29 residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item on the consent agenda is Item 13, Case 2016 SP-096-001. This is a request to rezone from IWD to SP zoning for properties located at Bass Street to permit a self-storage facility. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is Item 14, Case 2017 SP-02-001. This is a request to rezone from R 6 to SP zoning on property located at Sixth Avenue North to permit up to 11 residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions, and I will note on Item 14 that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself. Next item is Item 17, Case 2017 SP-009-001. This is a request to rezone from RS 10 to SP zoning for property located at DuWes Avenue North to permit 10 residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is Item 23. This is Case 201-69P-002. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan on property located at Old Hickory Boulevard to permit a truck wash facility, and the staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item is Item 25, Case 2017 Z-002 PR-001. This is a request to rezone from AR 2A and RS 20 zoning on property located at 1245 Barnes Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item is Item 26, Case 2017 Z-003 PR-001. This is a request to rezone from MUGA to MUIA, property located at 2300 Patterson Street, and staff recommendation is to approve, and I will note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself on Item 26. Next case is Item 27, Case 2017 Z-004 PR-001. This is a request to rezone from IG to MUIA zoning on property located at 100 Spring Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 29 is Case 2017 Z-006 PR-001. This is a request to rezone from RS 7.5 to R 8A zoning on property located at 2336 Old Matthews Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. And the last item under Other Business is Item 33, to accept the Director's Report and approve the administrative items.
Thanks, Bob.
All the items.
Let's go through these one more time. On Item F, we have, for the consent agenda, Item 6, Item 8, 9, 10, 11, 13, 14, 17, 23, 25, 26, 27, 29, and 33. Is that correct, Bob?
That's correct.
All right. Commissioners, you've heard the items for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Council Lady.
So I had some emails on Item 25, and also wondered, there were a couple others that weren't on consent that are now on consent. So one question is, why were they not on consent before, and how did they get on consent? And has the issue with Item 25 been resolved?
Well, first of all, I can tell you that we had a number of items that weren't on consent before because we still hadn't heard back from some of the departments regarding their review of those cases. That might have had something to do with the 85 applications that were received, but please remember that at budget time. And what was the, which item?
Item 25, I had one email about that one. Has that issue been resolved?
Petition?
Yes. Good afternoon. The issue has been resolved. The concern with the constituent was that they thought the zone change was for multifamily. It is for residential, single-family only, so we did clear that up.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Need a motion for the consent agenda?
So move.
Spin a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. The consent agenda is adopted. Now we're on Item G, that would be the public hearing, and I think I have items, only two items, which would, well, and so just a clarification, if you are not here for Items 24 or 28, we have taken care of all of the other items. Is that correct, Bob? We're only considering those two?
That is correct.
Okay. So if you're not here for Items Number 24 or 28, we've already either deferred it or passed it on the consent agenda, and I appreciate everybody coming. So we're ready to present Item 24. Go ahead, Patrick, if you're ready. And if everybody could, well, wait one second, Patrick. If everybody could quietly exit the back of the room, and that way we can continue the meeting. We really appreciate it.
The next item on this evening's agenda is Item 24. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan for a portion of a PUD on property located at Monroe Crossing. The subject lots are highlighted in red. This request is to permit 49 residential units. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. The site is currently zoned RM 15 and MUN. RM 15 is intended for single-family, duplex, and multifamily dwellings. MUN, mixed-use neighborhood, is intended for a low-intensity mixture of residential, retail, and office uses. The Plan Unit Development was originally approved in 1995 and contained a total of 45.1 acres. These lots represent the last lots within the PUD to be developed. These lots were originally approved for childcare and other mixed uses, and as a condition of the original PUD approval, multifamily uses were also approved as an option. This revision to the PUD is requesting approval for 49 dwelling units on 4.15 acres. As you can see, the five individual lots are highlighted in red, which contain the 13 separate structures which will house all 49 units. All units will front onto an existing street, which is Monroe Crossing. Each unit will have pedestrian connection to the existing sidewalk network, and access for the site will be provided to all units by Monroe Crossing. The Metro zoning code requires 98 parking spaces, and 119 spaces are being provided by the plan. In conclusion, staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions.
Thank you. We'll open this item for public hearing. And Council Lady, you want to come on up?
Thank you. I don't know if it's possible to move this to the heel of the agenda, but I have some neighbors who are planning to be here, and I've copied you all on some of the conversations going back and forth with the developer on this plan. One of the biggest concerns they have, and I'll go ahead and put it out there, is that this development was approved with insufficient number of dumpsters, and they're having an issue, this is one of the bigger issues with dumpsters, for the number of units they have there. The development does not include enough space on it to, for them to have dumpsters to throw away their trash. And with this plan, one of the concerns is that they have 49 units going up. There's not an issue, let me state that, there's not an issue with the type of housing, the number of units, or any of that, and they've really worked through that and fine with it. It's just really an issue about having a space for them to put the dumpsters, and where it's going to be located within the development, and that already with this plan, with the development, there's not enough waste spaces available. And she's here, she's going to come here, she has a couple other things, but that's one of the concerns, is identifying another parcel within this development to accommodate some dumpsters for those 49 units under construction. And I think they had a couple of more concerns, but other than that, those were two big things that we wanted to see addressed in the plan before they were comfortable with going forward. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
All right. So Council Ladies, since you're here, we appreciate you coming, but we have to let the, our normal procedure is to allow the applicant 10 minutes to come and speak and then do our normal procedure when we open the public hearing. So you can come back up and speak after, just if you would like. Yeah, I know, and we'll get to you all after the, so is the applicant in?
I represent the applicant.
Okay, come on up. So you'll have 10 minutes, and you can reserve two minutes of that 10 for rebuttal.
All right. Well, I shouldn't take long. We are applying to revise the plan, to add the additional units, and we have been receiving the emails. Brent Campbell is my father, I'm managing member of Camco Investments, I'm his daughter, I'm new to the team, and the new face of Camco, and he's semi-retiring. So we are in contact with Ms. Dowell and residents about their concerns. As far as the trash concerns, we are putting in three new dumpsters, and we are addressing all the parking concerns. We're working with Womblyn Associates as our engineer, and we've been told that the conditions for approval are, should not be a problem, and we assure everybody that we're going to do our best to make sure all those concerns are addressed. And I guess I'd say, if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer those.
Thank you. And you'll have two minutes for rebuttal, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? Anyone wishing to speak, seeing none? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? I mean, opposed?
I do. My name is Rebecca Carey, and I'm president of our-
Oh, come on up to the microphone and then state your name and your address.
My name is Rebecca Carey. My address, 5812 Monroe Crossing, and I am president of our, the Province Town Association. We don't, we are not opposed to the change to build townhomes, so I want to make that real clear. We think it'll be good for the community and a province town and for the Antioch area as a whole. We do have concerns with the trash, however. We have currently 236 homes with seven units to be built over and above the lots, the units with Mr. Campbell. He plans to put in 49 units. According to your standards, there should be four eight-cubic-yard dumpsters. We have nine right now for 236 homes. We have a constant overflow. We pay for one pickup, Metro does another pickup. That's two pickups a week on Monday and Thursday. If a day is missed, and even before that, the majority of the time, our dumpsters are already overflowing. We have, at three of the dumpsters, it is a constant, every Monday, every Thursday, they are over capacity. We have put- We have put trash containers recently behind not enough to even contain the amount of trash that is being used. We also connect to very large, single-family home housing communities. These three dumpsters within our community constantly get used by outsiders with their furniture and their own trash. And so, we have to deal with that. We pay over $5,000 a year to have a gentleman that goes around once a week to clean up around our dumpsters and haul off all this furniture. So, there is a tremendous expense, additional expense, to our homeowners that should not be there. According to the standards that I was provided with, we're supposed to have 17 eight-cubic-yard units.
We're going to give you five minutes until-
Thank you. Thank you. For 229 to 242 homes, there should be 17 eight-cubic-yard containers. Obviously, with nine, we are far away from that number. We have one dumpster that uses, that 32 homes use. We have another dumpster, 27 homes use. One that has eight, one that has nine, one that has 16 homes, one that has 34. Another dumpster has 42, another 40, and another 35. We need more dumpsters established in our community. And three dumpsters, even with the additional 49, is not going to be enough. Five of those 49 units, the location of those five are on Monroe Crossing. Those five units are going to end up using the Halifax dumpster, which already services 32 homes. They'll now, that will now service 37. That's going to be overflowing twice a week. That's what our community is asking for. We need help with this. It's a problem, and it's a huge expense to our community members right now. Again, we're not opposed to Mr. Campbell. He's been accommodating. We will be working to annex these into our community, these units. We look forward to doing that and working with him. But we need help. We realize that every time something gets added like this, we, we just add problems for us.
Thank you.
Okay?
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Oh, oh, I forgot. I forgot. I rescind that. The applicant, you have two minutes for rebuttal if you would like. I always get in a hurry. I apologize.
It's the long agenda that's got you scared.
Yeah, we are, we understand the concerns about the trash, and we are putting in extra dumpsters. If more need to be put in, we're happy to open a dialogue and work with the residents existing to make sure that there's not extra burden on them with the addition of these extra units. So, I invite you to talk with us and-
Just talk to the chair. Thank you.
Sorry. Open up a dialogue, and we're happy to help in any way we can to make sure that we keep providing a service to our residents throughout for the new units and the ones that are existing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other folks to discuss this matter, we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll open it up for y'all. Council Lady, you want to go first?
Sure. I appreciate the willingness of everyone to work together and to lay out exactly what the issues are. It's certainly easier to come up with a solution that way. I'm wondering, do we have the right to add to our conditions specific statements about the dumpsters? I mean, I would think that Public Works has criteria that were referred to or that someone does. But if there's a way to get that written into the conditions, that seems appropriate to me.
Heard of Public Works to answer that question? If we have Public Works here to answer? Come on up.
Beverly Amaral, traffic engineer. That I've heard are trash and recycling experts. I understand that there are standards that we have per the number of units. And I don't know, when this was approved back early 2000s, I believe.
Three or four.
Yeah. The standards may have changed since then. I don't know if you can go back retroactively and change it without some direction. But definitely, the 49 would have to meet the new standards if they have changed.
Thank you. I think, Council Lady, what we could do is put a recommendation that, you know, there's been concerns from constituents that the garbage is not adequate and that, you know, especially for the new units to come on, and that the commission recommends to Public Works that they increase the amount of dumpsters that they have. Now, is there anything else, Doug?
Well, it's really incumbent upon them to put the dumpsters out. It's just a matter of when we pick them up. But, and they're not going to increase the number of times they pick them up.
One, I wasn't clear on whether this, there was currently private trash pickup or whether Public Works picks up.
There is. Public Works picks up.
Ma'am, hold on a second. Council Lady.
We, they're in the general service district, so they do get trash pickup service. But because of the insufficiency with the dumpsters, what they've had to do is also contract with the private waste collection service to pick up for an additional day of the week. The issue is not necessarily the dumpsters and having them put out there, it's really the land and finding the location to put the dumpsters on the land. Because right now, their association, or the people who are residing there currently, there is not land, they don't own any land to put a dumpster on. And so, the developer has the land right now, and he has 49 units he's doing, and plus, I think he has another 234 units. So, what we want to make sure that it's within this plan, that we identify another space to accommodate some dumpsters. And we may need to legislatively go back and look at the requirements for how many dumpsters per unit. Because what we do know is that families now occupy multifamily dwellings. It's no longer one person dwelling in there. And even with the new recycle center, a new convenience center, we still have issues within our apartment complexes and multifamily housing, because it's just not, it's not sufficient with the number of people residing there to accommodate them.
Thank you for the clarification, Council Lady. We appreciate it, Doug. You recognize?
Yes, Bob was just pointing out, is that this is just a preliminary site plan, and that when they bring in a final site plan, the commission can instruct us to do is make sure that it's adequate locations for additional dumpster sites in the final site plan that's, when it's submitted.
I think that's the best thing that we can do is plan and commission.
Okay. So, just to clarify, this, the final site plan will come back to the full commission or is that administrated?
No, that'll just come back to, to the department.
So, okay. So, we can recommend to the department that they-
And we'll make sure that it meets the requirements that you lay out today.
Gotcha. And then, I don't know what, if you can remind me what the recycling requirements are? I know that we, at some point in the past three or four years, have made a statement about recycling in multifamily areas. I don't know if it was just Metro recommends that or what, but do we have?
I would throw it back to Public Works, but I'm not sure Traffic Engineer is going to be able to tell us what the recycling. With all due respect to the Traffic Engineer.
Just, just because I'm into garbage, I would love to also throw in recommendations for recycling capacity as well.
You can state it in the motion, but we'll make sure that they're meeting whatever requirements we have regarding recycling.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Diaz.
I think that's a good idea to include that as one of our recommendations. So, I would say, I would move to approve with the recommendation that they include or look for areas to include more dumpsters in the plan.
We'll make sure we put it in the motion. Commissioner, like, Commissioner? Anybody else? All right, well, we'll need a motion.
She made the motion. We just have a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's been a motion, a second to approve with the addition, suggestion that we, you know, that when it comes back for final plot approval, that includes more dumpster locations. Is that, everybody okay with that? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it. And item 24 is adopted. Item 28.
Hey, good evening. The next item on the agenda is item 28. This is a request for a zone change from R10 and RS40 to RS10 on various properties located on Clearview Drive, Crescent Road, Estes Road, Westmont Avenue, and Woodmont Circle. The parcels subject to this request are highlighted in red. Staff recommendation is to disapprove as submitted and approve with a second substitute ordinance. The current zoning for the properties in the area to be rezoned is R10, which is intended for single-family dwellings and duplexes with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. A portion of one property is also zoned RS40, which is intended for single-family with a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. The requested zoning is RS10, which is intended for single-family dwellings with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. The land use policy for the area is T3 suburban neighborhood maintenance, which is intended to preserve the general character of developed suburban neighborhoods. These areas have an established development pattern of low to moderate density residential and institutional uses. This area currently contains a mix of one and two-family residential uses. The parcels included in this zone change application are shaded in gray on the map. When staff evaluates a zone change, we look at several factors. The first being the land use policy for the area. In this case, the neighborhood maintenance policy calls for preserving the existing development pattern, which is mixed. We also look for opportunities to ensure a diversity of housing is available. In this case, there are existing duplexes in the area, which would become non-conforming if the zoning were changed to RS10. In order to preserve the diversity of housing and avoid making legal duplexes non-conforming, staff recommends removal of the legal duplexes. Staff has worked in consultation with the Metro Codes Department to evaluate available land use and permit information. The hatched parcels on the map are those identified as containing legal duplexes based on the information available. Retaining the duplexes, the R10 zoning that exists on the duplexes will preserve the existing diversity of housing in the neighborhood and avoid the creation of nonconformities. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove as submitted and approve with a second substitute ordinance to remove all parcels containing legal duplexes from the zone change.
Thank you. This item's up for public hearing, and the Council Lady will be the applicant, but we won't have a time limit for you, Council Lady. Then we'll reserve some time for you at the end if you need it, okay?
Y'all will probably start wanting to time us eventually, at some point when we start leaving.
Well, it's a courtesy, but we really recommend that you stay within.
Stay within 10 minutes.
We've been tempted before, but not because of you.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate that. So far, so far, so good. So, I filed this as the applicant because of a number of neighbors on these streets actually requested it. And if you remember, which I don't expect you to, because so many come before you, we just recently rezoned the strip above this on Woodlawn that's current, that is now RS15 and the RS20 on Woodlawn at the top corner of this map. And so, that happened kind of later in this, this past summer. And at that time, I was asked to and thought about putting in Estes, Crescent, and Clearview as part of that downzoning, but I didn't feel that I had had enough community input and community meetings about it. Because at that time, we were primarily focused on, on the Woodlawn streets. And so, about the week before the November elections is when I spoke to a couple neighbors who said, yes, we really want this, we would like you to move forward with it. And so, that's when I directed our staff to start drafting up a map. Since then, I've had two community meetings about this. One was kind of a giant meeting with a lot of other issues, and so, we had a variety of input. And then, one specifically about this, this, this map before you, where postcards were mailed out to the property owners, and then, of course, the required letters. And so, from there, I have had some people who, who have had questions, and we've tried to answer those, and I've directed them to staff and things. And I know that I've had a lot of communication with the staff about who should be opted out, who should be opted in, because I know, I knew that there were some zero lot lines in this area and some existing duplexes. And I defer, as usual, to, to the staff because they know, they know this stuff better than I do. And so, that's where we got, got to this map that I have before you today. And so, I ask for your support. I think that we, we're moving in a direction where neighbors are realizing what their base zoning is and that it doesn't match the existing character. And that a lot of my neighbors are voicing to me that they want their base zoning to match the character of the neighborhood that they have bought and invested in. And in fact, surprisingly, yet again, with my rezones, we're having people asking to be put into the zoning after it's been filed. And so, we'll probably have something coming again in the future for Woodmont Circle and Kenner. But I just think it's, I don't think we often hear that we've got people asking to be put into downzones. So, my district is special. So, I would appreciate y'all's support on this and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Council Lady. Appreciate it. And then, you'll have time at the end. And then, Councilman Cooper, would you like to speak as well?
Well, thank you very much. As a neighbor, but also as a councilperson, I guess I'm here to admire my district council lady's work on this. And through a series of community meetings, engagement, revisions, I think she really is representing this neighborhood. I live just adjacent to this rezoning, but there's been a series of rezonings that have been going on. And again, I think she's done a magnificent job in representing our neighborhood. And thank you all for helping her do that.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone wishing to speak in support of the ordinance, please come up. And if everybody could line up behind them, the folks that want to speak in support. Sir, you'll have two minutes, and please state your name and your address.
I'm Bob Covington. My wife and I live at 907 Estes Road within the area. I want to say that we support enthusiastically Councilmember Murphy's proposal. It's technically a change, but it's not really a change. It's just a recognition of what the neighborhood has truly become over the years. An area largely dominated by single-family residences on adequate but not extremely large lots, typically a third, a half acre. Second, within that context, the neighborhood continues to change. But it is within the context of that general single-family residence character. There's a new house across the street from me. It's certified green, costs nearly six figures. I don't know how on earth they managed to finance it, but they did, even though they have kids in private school. There are lots of renovations going on, lots of new kitchens, new playhouses. Finally, in addition to supporting this measure, let me say something about change. Nashville is changing. We have thousands and thousands of wonderful new millennials. The Gulch is marvelous. But 10 years from now, those millennials may not need the Gulch so much. They're likely to be looking for a house with enough of a yard for both a garden and a swing set. I just hope they can find it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melissa Wirt, and I live at 710 Crescent Road. I've been in my house for 25 years. I purchased it from my grandmother, who she had lived in it as well for 20 years before that. So, I've been in this neighborhood for a very long time. I am definitely in favor of limiting the dwellings that can be on any lot to be a single-family dwelling. What I've seen happen on both sides of me is smaller homes torn down, a 150-year-old oak tree cut down with, with no regard for what that tree provided the neighborhood so that, you know, two very large homes could be put on one lot. So, I, I'm not near, being nearly as eloquent as Mr. Covington, but I think what is so important is for us to maintain some semblance of what small neighborhoods were originally, what they originally provided, which was community yards where people could gather and children can play. And one of the issues with the, with the houses on either side of me is that there is absolutely no yard. There is hardly any green space. And I am grateful that our councilwoman- And I am grateful that our councilwoman has brought this to the council, I mean, to the planning commission, because I believe it will be beneficial for our neighborhood to keep single-family dwellings on our streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you. My name is Bob Levy, and I live at 718A Crescent Road. I'm one of the zero-lot line houses, the real skinny ones in there. I'm here in support of Councilwoman Murphy's proposal. The neighborhood is remarkably wonderful for its quietude, for its peace, for its lack of traffic, for its lack of density. Yet it has quite a mixed character with duplexes and single-family. We've seen quite a number of recently much larger homes in the area as well. So I'm here merely to speak in support of it. I'm grateful that she has been proactive in moving in this direction, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Adrian Claggett. I am a resident at 711 Estes Road, and I want to reiterate what has been said precedent of me and thank Councilwoman Murphy for bringing this up. It's become somewhat of a joke of my house being an expensive teardown, because it's only really 1,600 square feet. And the amount of mailings and inquiry on my property for it to be torn down has it so that I do call it my expensive cute little teardown. So when Councilwoman Murphy taped this on, I was very appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone wishing to speak? Oh, come on, if y'all would get closer to the microphone.
Yes, my name's Bobby Towns. My wife and myself, we live at 3939 Woodlawn Drive that is located at the corner of Estes and Woodlawn. And I realize that progress must go on. Old houses do have their use done away with. They do become old, and they do need replacing. Some are not well-kept. I understand all this. However, I do not object to new houses being built as long as they're commensurate with existing neighborhood. But what I do resent are these boxy, tall, and skinny, stacked-up, cracker-box houses being built in our neighborhood. I think it ruins the effect of our neighborhood. It's an old, established neighborhood. And we're the neighbors. We're the ones that live there. These builders that come in and want to make a quick buck, you know, that's a different thing. But I think that you should be in support of the neighborhoods and support what they want. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come on up. If y'all would get closer to the microphone, that would be great. And then each of you have two minutes, and just state your name and your address.
Ladies and gentlemen, and Council Lady Murphy, she's behind me somewhere. My name is Mike Nixon. My wife and I, and my best friend Mike Patton and his wife Terry, own the big lot at the bottom of the hill at Crescent Road. We have purchased that lot several years ago with the intent of building our retirement homes there for myself and his family. So to put two houses on this lot and do it under the zoning that we're afforded as an HOA under the R-10 guidelines that we purchased the property, we rely on that zoning. In order to do that, we paid a fair amount of money for it. We're not rich people. I, like many people in this room, work for the government, so that should tell you something. I've never received, until Saturday, any mailings, any phone calls, any notification of any kind that this was going on. I've never been invited to a meeting. I never got to put my two cents worth in on anything that anybody had to say. I did catch wind of this two weeks ago, and I called Council Lady Murphy to see what was going on. And she referred me to planning and said to come down and state my case. And we talked a bit about the neighborhood. I love the neighborhood. The neighborhood's great. But I purchased this lot, my friend and I purchased this lot, relying on the fact that we could build a two-unit condominium on that lot and retire there and live there and be good neighbors. There's something about having your rights taken away that I'm not real fond of. I don't think it's right that a person gets his property rezoned against his will or his wishes. It's my intent, our intent, to build two residences on that property, which is afforded to with the R-10 zoning that we purchased the property under.
Thank you.
We would like to continue our rights and continue on as we are. We have plans. It's already been staked in everything.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else? State your name and your address, please.
My name is Teresa Connor. I live at 603 Estes Road. We have lived in our house for 42 years. Our house is a typical one-story home about the average size of homes that were in our area when we moved in. Since then, Estes Square on the corner of Estes and Westmont has been developed from one home to eight homes. Across Westmont from Estes Square, a development of two townhouses, eight townhouses, has gone in where there was one house. Two doors down at 607 Estes Road, there are now two tall homes being built where there used to be one small, single-story home. Behind us on Crescent, 704 through 708, there are now four tall homes where there used to be two homes about the size that used to dominate the area. Beside us at 601 Estes Road, the property has recently been split into two lots where presumably two to four very tall houses are likely to be built where a single-story home used to sit. My point is that the development has been going on in our neighborhood for a very long time. Because our house is rapidly becoming the smallest house, the value of our house is now in the land. We have worked hard to pay for this property, and it's our biggest asset. We believe rezoning our home to RS will materially damage the value of our property. It seems unjust that after allowing the type of development that has gone in all around us, we should now be denied the right to sell our home under the zoning that has been in effect since the date of our purchase. Additionally, we were told in the October community meeting that we would be able to opt out of the zoning. However, last Friday, we were informed that we may not be able to opt out. Additionally, we are now told that the RS zoning will increase the value of our home over time. My husband is 70. I'm going to be 68. We don't have time to wait for that increase. Our overtime investment was begun 42 years ago in 1975. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Hello. My name is Henry Connor. I live at 603 Estes Road. My wife was just speaking. I wish someone could explain the justice of the downsizing. As Terry said, we purchased our home 42 years ago with the understanding that we could sell it as a single or two-family dwelling at any time we chose. In the years since then, others purchased property around us with the same restrictions and understandings. Now we are being told that because the people around us might not like the look of our property, they are able to dictate what we can and cannot do with our property. We are in the minority, therefore we are wrong and lose our right to choose. In the past, I would have thought it to an extreme example, but in one of the many meetings we have recently been to, we heard someone say, "And they always paint them white," referring to the new constructions. Maybe paint color will be the next thing that will be dictated by a group of people around a particular house. I have read the many letters that y'all have received over the last few days, and most seem to be in favor of the change. But I wish you would note that very, very few are in the area that's being affected. They're in neighborhoods around, or maybe not even close. I just don't see the justice. I asked an attorney last week the justice question, and he said, "Well, it's not just." My thought is, why do it then? Instead of putting everyone in the downsizing, maybe exclude certain people that want to be excluded from it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Frances Lombard. I live at 707 Clearview Drive. My family has owned this property since 1925. I grew up in the neighborhood. I know it well. I have no plans to develop or to sell, but I resent being deprived of my property rights for people who are going to achieve very little from it, I believe. What is posted now, the memorandum from staff, is deceptive. There are many more duplexes in the Crescent-Clearview Oval there. Three I know of on Clearview, two, four at least on Crescent. These are low-rise. They've not been developed yet. They probably will be eventually. The zoning plan, as I understand it for this neighborhood, is to retain the character of the neighborhood. The character is duplexes, a mix of duplexes and single-family houses. It's not going to keep it low-rise to change this zoning and deprive people of the value of their property. It's not going to make the difference that people seem to think it's going to make. I think it is a mistaken proposal, at least as applies to the loop that I really know, that Crescent-Clearview loop. And I would urge that it be rejected. If there are other parts of the area in which it is more appropriate, that's fine. But I would like to register my disapproval, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Mary Camerata. I'm at 700 Clearview. I have resided in the property since 1990. I don't have any intention of, I hope I stay there for the duration, honestly. I've raised seven children there. And I love the neighborhood, and I love the way it is. And the way it is is a mixed-use neighborhood. When I look at that little drawing, there's a whole bunch of duplexes that are missing from it. But, so it's much more mixed than that would lead you to believe. I do have feelings about how people develop things. There are certain developments that I look at and I think, "Oh, what a shame." Or there's other ones, right, the duplex, a small house went down next to me, now duplex came up. It's a lovely duplex. I have lovely neighbors. I don't have a problem with that at all. I don't think the idea of, on sort of a fairness and a moral basis, the idea that you allow people to buy something and because there's a group of people, even if it's a majority, that doesn't like it for personal reasons, that you change their zoning, you're taking something from people. And I don't know if that's right. I also don't know if changing the zoning, and you would know this answer better than me, changing the zoning so there can only be one house, does that mean we won't get one giant monstrosity as opposed to two medium-sized monstrosities? I mean, I'm all about making it so that the neighborhood can sort of agree with maybe the aesthetics of the development, or maybe we want so many trees. Or I think when somebody tears down a small house, and even if they just put up one house, they're going to cut down the trees. I've seen that. It's a shame. I hate it. But does that allow us to say, you know, "Pull the ladder up on the board. I know that you got this one investment in mind, but I'm okay." So I just, I don't know. It seems like it's, seems like it's wrong. A lot of people are depending on their retirement.
Thank you.
Good evening. I would just like to ask everyone in the room. I have a voice problem. I've had a couple surgeries, so hopefully you'll be able to understand what I'm saying. But my name is Mike Patton, and I'm the other half of Mike Nixon. I just want to tell a story for mainly Councilman Murphy and the neighbors here tonight. I've lived in that area for the last 40 years, raised five children on the back portion of Linwood Boulevard, a very private street. When I saw this lot that Mike presented to me, it reminds me of the area where I live now. It's nice and private. I am not a contractor. I've never built anything in Nashville, or anywhere else for that matter. Pardon me. I spoke to a couple earlier here tonight, and I understand what their displeasure is with having this house is knocked down and putting two awkward-looking houses on the property. I'm not opposed to that, but I understand their position. That's not what we intended. And I think that the fact that we bought this property a year and a half ago, actually started looking at it two years ago, it had certain property rights with it at the time that we bought it. So we should at least be able to build the house that we intended to build with the rights that came with it. I intend to have a small swimming pool in my house. I have plans. We're getting ready to bid. Hopefully, we'll start building in the spring. I would ask any neighbor this year, if you want to look at our plans and see if they fit the neighborhood. You don't have approval, of course, but I'd like to assure you it's not going to be something that would be offensive to the neighborhood. It would certainly be an addition to the neighborhood. I can't really think of anything else to say, except I think it's really unfair to buy something under one set of rules, and then a small minority of people say, "Whoops, we don't want you to do what you have the right to do, and we're going to try to change it." Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi, I'm Terri Spitalnick, and I live with my husband at 702 Crescent Road. We bought the house in 1991. It was the first house that we bought together as a couple. And we later purchased the house at 605 Estes Road that backs up to it. So we have two properties. And I don't know if you have the map in front of you, but right in the middle, there are the two excluded properties. There's like three. Ours are literally in the shadow of what has been built there. We have renovated and expanded our house at 702 Crescent Road so that it, I think it was maybe 1,800 square foot, now it's 3,300 square feet. But from the front, it still retains scale with the neighborhood. And we paid more for reclaimed bricks so that we could keep the neighborhood sort of in scale. The builder at 604 Estes, I mean Crescent, just south of us, had no such compunction. Our house is 20 feet tall from the ground to the tip of the roof. That house is 45 feet tall from the top of the basement, and that sticks up five feet. So literally, 20 feet of our house is next to 50 feet of this new house. It does happen to be painted white. And so that turned our house, I guess it turned it into a teardown. I don't know. I actually have trouble even thinking about it. And so I guess we were lucky for a long time. The house on the other side of ours, the woman who... Okay, a couple of quick things. I counted duplexes in the area and houses that are taking, you know, have taken one lot and turned it into two. There are 16 duplexes, and so that is 32 families.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but we have to leave.
One-third of the people would be living in houses that are out of compliance. That map is nowhere near.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Sorry. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, time for rebuttal. Council lady?
I know that a couple people have talked about that there are more duplexes in appearance in the shaded map, and that's something that I've talked to staff about. And there are some that, like the zero-lot lines, some of the skinny ones that you can see directly across from the word Crescent. And so those, I think, are attached. And so they would appear to be a duplex, but those are zero-lot lines. Same with the ones that are on the corner of Westmont and Estes. And there are, and I talked to staff about this, and I don't know if they want to speak to this, if you want to speak to what we discussed about, about if there is a duplex that y'all didn't catch.
Once the closed public hearing...
Once the closing public hearing, I'll address that.
Okay, great. And so I think the feedback that I have got, although not all here tonight, has been in support of trying to downzone this to something that is more reflective of the neighborhood. And when we talk about the neighborhood, we're not just talking about these shaded streets. We are talking about the broader area, as you can see on this map, much of which is already zoned, single-family. And this is an area that has a little bit more of a mix with multifamily or two units on one lot. But I think overwhelmingly, this is an area that I would consider almost maxed out, that if we continue to allow every single one of these shaded properties, or all the way down Woodmont Circle and Kenner, we're going to have a serious traffic and infrastructure issue through here. There's already stormwater issues through here that I've sent in to the corner of Estes and Woodmont, I sent in at the last rain. The corner of Wilson and Woodmont, I sent in. Kenner has got a slated stormwater issue. Kenner's got a slated traffic redevelopment pattern, although it's been redesigned twice already. This is an area that I think is maxed out on the density that it can really withhold and stand. And so I ask that you go with the recommendation of the staff to approve the secondary substitute and move forward with this. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, council lady. And seeing no other speakers, I declare the public hearing closed, and if we have questions, we'll let you know. I'll start with you, Mr. Chairman. Before we do that, there was a question that Doug wanted to answer.
Right, I know it came up a number of times, and, you know, we've reached out to the council lady a number of times throughout this process because we've been trying to assess what is out there. When you look at it from the street, it looks like, it does appear that there are a lot of units that are being used as duplexes in the area. And what we wanted to try to figure out is which are being used legally as duplexes. There's a process you have to go through when you convert your home from a single-family to a duplex. So what we looked at was, we looked at the permit information that we have that's accessible to us through the codes department, worked with the codes department to try to make the determination about where are there legally, legal duplexes within the area that's to be downzoned. And so that's the ones that you have here that we've asked the council lady if she's agreeable to removing those from the rezone, the ones that we know have permits to have duplexes on the property. That's how we came up with the ones that we asked to remove. We try not to create non-conforming properties as a general rule. It's a good idea. And so she was agreeable to remove those, and when the time comes, if the commission so chooses. One of the things that I've asked to put into the motion, that I would ask the motion to include, is that it's an approval with the second substitute, if that's where the commission's going. I'm not saying that that's where you land, but if you do land there, I would ask that the ordinance remove all parcels containing legal duplexes from the zone change. And I wanted to phrase it in that way because while we have tried to exhaust the information that we have available to us and carve out the ones that are legal duplexes, we're not 100% sure. So we want to leave open the opportunity for a property owner to come to the council lady, show proof that they, that codes would accept them as a legal duplex, that they have gone through the right channels to operate as a duplex, and that they would be legally considered duplex today, but allow this legislation at a later opportunity to be amended to include those, or I should say, remove those from this rezone. And the council lady's been open to that, so I just want to make sure that at the end of this exercise, wherever the commission ends, that if y'all do choose to recommend approval, that it's with that caveat that later on, other lots might be taken out that are legal duplexes today.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions of Doug on that particular issue? All right, Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to ask staff to clarify for me. I think I heard that part of this would be RS 10 and part of it RS 40. Can you tell me what parcel's RS 40?
The easiest way to do that would be to show you. There's one parcel where I have my cursor on the map here. It is currently split-zoned. It is mostly zoned R 10, and this sliver here is zoned RS 40. My research leads me to believe that occurred when the lot owner purchased that piece of property, that sliver, from their neighbor. And the neighboring property to the west is zoned RS 40. And so when they purchased that sliver of land, the zoning RS 40 came with it. It's all one parcel, and so as proposed by the council member, all of that parcel would be zoned RS 10 if you were to move this forward.
The other question then is, along Wilson Boulevard, there's one large lot, I thought at first maybe that was the RS 40, that faces Wilson. Is it one?
Elmington Park.
This is Elmington Park?
Elmington Park.
Okay. But the largest parcel in the lower right-hand corner then, to the southeast, is that, that would be RS 10 also?
Yes, sir.
So that would allow that lot then to come in and be re-subdivided into smaller lots?
Just to clarify...
No, go ahead.
Are you referring to this large parcel here?
Yes.
That is a park property owned by Metro Parks.
Okay.
So it has some other considerations on it, but...
But if that was, if it wasn't a park, would someone under the RS 10, if some of these are larger than 20,000 square feet or 30,000 square feet, can they by right then come in under RS 10 and re-subdivide that into a 10,000-square-foot lot?
As long as they meet our subdivision regs, and as long as they have enough, the right frontage and enough square feet, they could. And this opens up an opportunity for another discussion because I do want to bring something up that the council lady and I have really struggled in our conversations back and forth with, and staff, we really struggled with as well. And it's the island lot, if you will, there where it says Crescent Road. It is over 20,000-square-feet lot, so, and the frontage, given that it goes the entire distance of the lot, is more than enough to meet those, our subdivision regs. So that lot would be able to be subdivided into two RS 10 lots. So I know that we've spoken to the property owners and we understood what their intent was on the property, and so they would still be able to achieve that. Now, that would leave them with a couple of other struggles that my understanding is that the council lady would, you know, help them with, and certainly we are agreeable with, because it triggers a few things. One, setbacks might start to become an issue. I don't think they might. They definitely would become an issue with this odd-shaped lot. But with setbacks, you'd go to the BZA. The BZA has variance process, the law, state law regarding variances talks about, one of the reasons that you might be, might qualify for a variance from setbacks is an odd-shaped lot. I don't think they'd have to spend all that much time to figure out that that one qualifies under that criteria. So, but they would, it would create another hoop they'd have to go through, through the BZA, and, you know, then it's up to the BZA to make that decision about whether they give them that variance. Then the next thing is, is that in our subdivision regs, we require sidewalks to be built under these conditions if you did this subdivision. But we would be in, we would probably recommend approval to the commission for a reduction in that impact. A, because I don't think anybody really is looking for a sidewalk in a circle. Doesn't really get you anywhere, doesn't add anything to the sidewalk network, not to mention what it would actually do to the buildable lot. And B, it would be, we did the calculations under today's amount, and the amount that they would be required to with a strict application of our subdivision regs would be somewhere just under $65,000. And so we would probably help them with an application to come back in front of this commission to ask for a modification to that requirement because that is onerous in the development of that property. So we, as you can tell, we looked at this, and we went back and forth, because if you leave it as RS-zone property, then it allows them to build just what we just talked about, but it also leaves the opportunity for them subdivided in four lots to go, or four units to go on this island, which we don't think is a good development pattern on this piece of property at that location, but they would be entitled to do so if it stayed as R-zone property, which gave us a lot of concern, and I think gave the council lady concern as well. But that's not what they voiced their desire to do, and moving it to R-zone property would still leave their ability to do just as what they've described, but with those caveats I just gave you about the variances, and then coming back in front of this body for that modification on the sidewalk requirements. So, long answer to your question, but I wanted to use that one as an example because it has a lot of other twists and turns to it. But the other lots that are over 20,000 square feet, that have the adequate frontage that would meet our subdivision regulations for infill subdivision, they could. They could subdivide and be, even though they're R-zone properties.
Because...
I'm sure Carrie has caveats on that.
Because the subdivision regulations require us to compare the proposed lots against the size of the surrounding lots, the requirements would be the same under the subdivision regulations, whether it was zoned R 10 or RS 10. We would still be comparing it to those surrounding lots.
Well, since you brought that one up, I don't see another one up there that would be in the same category, maybe across the street.
There's not another one like that, probably in the city.
To the southwest of it, but, or directly across the street, but if, if they came in today, or any of those property owners came in today, let's take the one in the circle, because it seemed like that is the one that would create most cost for someone to run sidewalks or setbacks and do a lot of engineering. You say they could build four units, but if it's R...
If it were RS, and I have to put a lot of caveats on this, but if it were RS-zone property, and they met the subdivision regs so they could subdivide it into two lots, and it was still zoned RS, then they would, I'm sorry, if it was still zoned R instead of RS, and you subdivide it, then they would be able to put two units on each one of those lots. So you'd end up with four units.
But it looks like to me that, because I'm far property rights, you know my voting record on that, and there were seven people here that were opposed to it and five that were for it, so it looks like it's not 100% that people in this area that live here really want this, they ought to be able to opt out. I don't know with the council lady, are they going to allow that or not? Can anyone opt out if they decide they don't want to be part of it?
So what I've done in the past is really listened to what the planning staff has recommended on who to opt out and who to opt in on other zoning matters. I've had other zoning before y'all that they have said that there are too many duplexes on the street, and so we have just taken that whole street out. And honestly, I was concerned about, you know, applying for this one and thinking that y'all might say that there's too many duplexes. It would look like Swiss cheese, take it out, you know, don't even try to do this. And so what I would want to look at is people who request to opt out, look at kind of where they're positioned in, on the map, and look at what their lot looks like, because I think every lot is different and unique. And if it is a lot that is surrounded by all the other lots that would not, that are single-family, and if we're putting together kind of patchwork quilt or Swiss cheese zoning, I've got to consider that. Now, the island lot, for example, is a lot that Director Sloan and I did talk a lot about, and I've spoken to the property owners about, and I am concerned that if, for whatever reason, they did not move forward with their current plans, that that could turn into a four-unit development that is, would probably be out of the character of the whole, the whole area because of the uniqueness. And so I've talked to Director Sloan and briefly to the property owners before this. I would definitely support a BZA application for them there to reduce the rear, side, or front, or whichever of the 360 setbacks, that would be a hardship to them, because I think that fits the criteria more than anything else. And I know you mentioned Woodmont Park, and I think that if Metro decided to get rid of Woodmont Park and develop that large piece of property, you would see like a small civil war break out, because we all love that that is now a park.
I wouldn't vote for that either.
This is good, good.
But it just seemed like to me that we're putting an onus on this and maybe some others, that they're going to have to come back, and especially this one, so odd-shaped with the sidewalks around it that...
Correct.
We're causing them to now go spend applications for BZA and sidewalks and stuff that may or may not be approved, but...
And I think that's something...
I know what the neighborhood's trying to accomplish, and all neighborhoods, even where I would live, I would, you know, support this property. I'm not sure, but other than, you know, I am strong property rights, as everyone on this knows and once ever sat on it for the last 16 years with me. But I think the, I think the lady just, the last one that spoke was talking about scale. I think that's the issue, is that nobody wants a 50-foot-tall house, but if you're coming in and you're the same character to the neighborhood, that, that is the issue, I think, more so than whether it's one unit or two units. I mean, someone could, even a single-family, they're going to be able to tear, say it's 12, 14 square feet, they can tear that down, build a 5,000-square-foot house if they want to, you know, which is out of scale. So I won't keep laboring this. I know the other commissioners want to talk and get out of here.
Well, I will reference to the emails that you received, and there are a lot of people who support this, who were not able to come here tonight, and a lot of emails that y'all received that are in support of this, yes, some live on surrounding streets because although they are not touching this property, they are affected by it.
You say surrounding streets that didn't come, but...
Some of the emails you did receive, but there are a number of emails that y'all received from property owners in the shaded area who were not able to come here tonight.
So people that don't live within this shaded area then can have a say-so? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that they're supporting it, but that y'all have a lot of emails that do live in the shaded area who do support this and were not able to come tonight. For example, the Barnes family who owns two properties in the shaded area, the Ross family who owns property and it's their family home they inherited from their grandparents that live in the shady area who are not here tonight. And I think that I would agree with you that typically, I don't want to put an extra hoop on a property owner when we are downzoning them and then making them jump through another hoop, but I think that they would, would want to have a variance on their sidewalk requirements.
And thank you, council lady. We don't want to get in a running debate.
I understand.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Haynes?
I too am a property rights advocate and would support some type of opt-out provision. This is a really small area. You've got a hodgepodge of zero-lot line homes, duplexes. It seems like the impacted lots remaining are very limited, so I'll listen to my fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Haynes.
I'm not going to go on the record and say I'm not property rights advocate. I see and appreciate the need to balance preservation of the character of a community, especially in a city that's growing as quickly, almost too quickly for some of us, as Nashville is, and appreciate the efforts of both the community as well as the council person in addressing these. And I have a feeling we'll be seeing you more often, and that this might not get any easier. But also balancing preservation of neighborhood character with property rights and owning a home for just 1925 or 1974, or however long that's been, and expecting that you'll be able to do with that property what you want. What does the mayor say? Want it to be yes in our backyard? We can't hodgepodge development either, and if we're going to have to do, we have to do something. I agree about some of the opt-outs. I mean, if this was my home and somebody came to me and said, we're going to do this and you don't have a choice, I would have a problem with it. My question for the staff is, what's going on with the two properties on the, in the corner of Woodmont and Estes that are not, are white? The two lots on the corner? Do you know why they're not include, I'm sorry, Woodmont and Estes? Woodmont Circle, I apologize. Woodmont Circle and Estes.
Oh, these?
Yes, those two.
Are they pointing to?
No, the two on the corner, on the other corner. So you have shaded gray, and then you have those two.
I might defer to the council member since she proposed the initial area to be included.
So when we were drawing this, working with, I think Brandon is the one who initially helped me draw... helped me draw this, I basically gave him street names and told me to, you know, let me know what that looks like. And so what it was is the, to try to keep on block faces and the way the houses look, I mean, like where they face. Those two houses face Woodmont Circle, and so that block face would go all the way to where you see Clearview Drive, which is interesting because Clearview Drive, property owners have asked to be put in this, and I couldn't, or would have to go all the way, you know, loop all the way around the corner. We felt like that was too much of a, Kinner Manor is that neighborhood association, and they have done a survey, and so they're the ones who, we might be back here in a few months. And so again, they just faced that way, so it didn't make sense for that block face at this time.
Okay. I can see that now. I see, but I just want to make sure.
Six to one.
Yeah, okay. I, and I appreciate the, the, this little property, this isolated island property issue. I think it's an intriguing idea. You mentioned, the homeowner mentioned having the property staked. Do we have any kind of plan or anything for that property that's been submitted, or can I ask that question?
Sir, if you'll come up, we've asked, you can come up and since, come on up to the microphone, since she's, since the commissioner's asking a question. Yes, sir.
Have you done anything to the property to prepare it for this development?
The lot has been staked, the houses have the corner stakes on them. I have construction drawings. My friend here is two weeks away from construction drawings, and he's ready to start. I'm not quite ready to start, we've had some, some family issues, but regardless, we're, we're so far along. I mean, literally, I went down to see about going ahead and getting a building permit for my plans when I heard about this, and they said, "No, you can't, it's, you can't, you can't do this now." All we really want to do is just opt out and build our two houses and be good neighbors.
But back to the director's point, I mean, you could build two houses if you subdivided the lot. You mentioned condo or HOA and-
Well, we wanted to do an HOA because it, it gives us more room, that way you can be six feet from each other, for instance. And the way we have our houses designed, the backs of them are six feet from each other. It gives us bigger yards, it gives us a bitter, a bigger opportunity for our yard. We don't have any big trees on our lot, it's clear there's no house on it, it burned down years ago. So we've done a lot of work on this in the last couple of years, and, you know, this obviously caught us by surprise. We don't want to put four houses on it, we simply want to opt out and keep our rights as our, if we want to do a two-unit association with a wall between us, it gives us a bigger place for our yard, as opposed to trying to split the lot and doing, which is, you know, I understand that, but the new regulations bill, they bring a lot of things into play that the old regulations don't. And, but mainly it gives us a bigger place to put our house, not that we're going to make them bigger, it actually gives us a little latitude into where we put them on the lot. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think that's, I'm going to listen to the rest of the commissioners come back around.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Definitely more of context, a neighborhood context, I feel is important, and I'm pretty familiar with this area, I've driven through it a few times. So, you know, I know downzoning is always pretty, you know, brings a lot of conversation, but it does, I do feel like that this is a good example of what could be, and to, this downzoning does work in this area. I definitely sympathize with the owner who has already started his plans, and I, I do feel like there should be some consideration to that, that they've already put into the work on it. I don't know how far it is as far as with approvals, I mean, you described it, but, you know, there, there has been an investment into it, and I, you know, once you've started, I do understand that, and I, maybe there's something that could be worked out, but I, but I, I would be concerned about leaving the door open that you put four units on it, because then all of a sudden that, and even though that's not their plan, and that's why I feel like if there's not their plan, then let's, let's not make it, then let's just make it, because four units would really crowd that, even, but, you know, like I said, that's not what their intention is. But yeah, I'm really, I'm, I'm a proponent of neighborhood context, and I think that density is good in certain areas, and not saying even some of these areas are okay for it, but I think that being able to keep the context, and the thing is too, is once you open the door, yeah, you, you're like, it's all of a sudden, the neighborhood can totally change by people who move out or sell their home, then all of a sudden, that neighborhood is totally revamped to something different. So I support the downzoning. I, I definitely, like I said, people who've started work on it, I believe there's some kind of allowance maybe should be worked out with them, but I, I think for this neighborhood, this is, this is perfect for it. And like, I'm glad you described the whole parcels and what, what we were, what was the disapproval and what we were approving as a second substitute, because everybody who does have it, of course, shouldn't be all the, whatever that are not located on the, on the plan. But my feeling is with this area, contextual, it works.
Council lady.
Thank you. I appreciate all the people that have come out to speak, and there's certainly a lot of good, good thoughts being put forth on this. Like Commissioner Tibbs, I mean, I think that there are neighborhoods whose character is worth preserving. I certainly appreciate Mr. Covington's statement about those millennials at some point wanting to have a yard to raise their families in, and I, I think, you know, in all our grand scheme of Nashville, we do need to preserve houses with yards. This seems like a likely place to do that. That being said, I'm still, I'm still getting used to the idea of, of not wanting to create non-conforming lots and therefore taking out the legally conforming duplexes. When our neighborhood did our RS downzoning, we, we did the whole shoot and match, and it's full of duplexes that can become larger duplexes or whatever. So we didn't have to worry about the, the Swiss cheese effect. And so it seems to me like, because we don't want to create non-conforming lots, we've already sort of blessed Swiss cheese a little bit, which makes, I guess, makes me more open than I would have been in the past to, Councilmember Murphy continuing to have conversations with the planning staff on, you know, is it appropriate for some of the requests for opt-out to be made because of where they sit or because they don't create, you know, a dangling leg over there that's not connected? You know, it's, it's always nice when you can make everybody happy, that's not always possible. But I, I think in general, I think this is an appropriate area to do the downzone, if it's possible to, to at least continue to look at, at some of the, I mean, it looks to me like there are 100 lots, and there are six lots where there's a question of including them or not. Excuse me, I'm, I'm referring to the six that I heard from, that I'm aware of.
Please let the commissioner speak.
Apologize.
Thank you.
Being, being a numbers person, I'm just based on, and, and if I look at the number of letters that came in, I haven't had a chance to draw my map and see how many are within the district, but it did seem like, I have, I have certainly gotten a lot of emails from people in support. So I would, I will continue to listen to my fellow commissioners, but I think, I think if it can be worked out in a way that, that can leave most people being able to do what they want to with their property and protect their neighborhood, I would, I would support that.
Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you. I have a few questions. I know that this, the policy here is neighborhood maintenance, but do we have a map of what the surrounding area, the neighborhood, what the policies are around there? That's, most of it is neighborhood maintenance, okay. So I think my first thought was, how does this transition, how does density transition in this area as RS-10 from the surrounding neighborhood? Does it work? Does it not work? So looking at that, it looks like you'll have more density at the bottom, and then, so, because all of the bottom is R-10, right? Is that correct? R-10? And then you'll ha, you have RS-15, which, you know, is last. So I don't know, it seems like, I don't know, I don't know that it might, it might work there, but I think that with the fabric of the existing lot sizes and how different they already are, looking at it from a map as a, as a planner, it doesn't seem like the consistency, the fabric is very consistent already there. I could see if the streets were a little bit more structured in a different part of the neighborhood. I'm just looking at it basically, basically from a planner's perspective in like, like the lot, the fabric of the, of the blocks and all of that. So I feel like because of that, it just, it makes it seem like if what you're worried about is more density than what, how many lots are already, are able to have two, two homes, I guess, or, or two duplexes, because it seems like some of this small, there's some small ones, and then there's some big ones, and then I guess there's some that are 20,000 square feet. So is it all, are they all eligible to be, to have two duplexes, or is it the majority of them?
So in the, in the R-10 zoning district that's in place on these properties now, it's for single-family dwellings or duplexes, in order to be eligible for a duplex, you have to meet certain conditions of the zoning code, which have to do with when and how the lot was created. And that's determined by the codes department rather than the planning department. But, so I can't answer specifically who is and is not eligible, they would just need to check with codes and have that determination made.
I do want to raise an issue that this commission has addressed a number of times, and we've had, over the years, we've had a number of council members, including the one sitting to my right when he was a council member, downzone areas from R to RS and-
1,600 acres.
1,600 acres. And oftentimes, especially in recent years, what we've tried to do with the, with the planning department is identify locations where we think duplexes would still be appropriate in the area that's being downzoned. Normally what we do is we identify larger lots, we identify corner lots, and y'all have heard these arguments many times from your staff when these cases are brought in front, and we work with the council members, and by and large, the council members have agreed with us and said, "Yeah, that seems like an appropriate percentage of, of lots to remain eligible for duplexes," and those are, they tend to agree with the, the locations as well. And we had this conversation with, with the council lady, and, but as we had that discussion and we became more and more familiar with the number of lots that, and as the community has, has indicated, the number of lots that appear to be duplexes today, we felt like that there was already a sufficient stock of duplexes in this area, that we had a diversity of housing stock that we hope to achieve in a lot of our other downzonings that we see. And so we, we didn't see that there was that same necessity that we often bring to the commission, because we felt like that had been achieved just in the natural development of this area. So anyway, that, that's why you often hear that argument, and you're not hearing it today, because there, if all the lots that we see that are being used as duplexes today are actually legal lots, then I think that they've certainly achieved that diversity of housing in the area.
Okay, I guess, I just, just wanted to get clarification. Will the majority of the lots that are in this shaded area, are they eligible to have that, the, have duplexes on there? Because of their lot size?
Well, I couldn't tell you, because we, we'd have to do an analysis of every single lot, and we haven't done that. So I couldn't tell you that today under the R-zone whether, which ones could and which ones couldn't. Clearly some of them can't, clearly some of them are already, have already been subdivided and are too small for that.
I guess my point is, one of the, I'm not trying to compare, but one of the other cases we saw before, we, it came down to the lot size and how, how most of the lot size, or lots in that shaded area couldn't even really, weren't even eligible to have the duplexes or whatever else they were trying to do. So I think I'm just trying to go back through the same process that I, my thought process that I went through before and seeing, you know, like, that's how I want to make my decision now. But I think overall, I, I'm leaning more towards, I guess, protecting the property rights of the people that don't want to be in this downzoning, and I, I think that if we already taking out some of the lots, like duplexes, then it seems like they should be allowed to opt out if they can.
Commissioner Blackshear.
To follow up on your points, Doug, about the, the currently identified legal duplexes, if, and you've said that there's the possibility there are more legal duplexes that we just haven't found yet, and you raised the hypothetical, if all of the, what appear to be duplexes on the street or in the area, the shaded area, are in fact legal duplexes, and they're all properly excluded or opted out, because we don't want them to be non-conforming once the rezoning happens, I mean, doesn't that, I mean, would it be too Swiss cheesy at that point to even say that this is appropriate zoning? I guess, I guess at what point, because there may be some more legal duplexes that we haven't identified, at what point do we think that this is, because there's so many properties that will have to be opted out just to avoid non-conformities, at what point do we think this is probably not an appropriate place for a complete rezoning?
Well, I'll tell you that when you have a new subdivision and you're, and it's, let's say that we're just taking a piece of land and we're going to subdivide it, and we're going to create 100 lots, and I'm looking for staff to correct me, because I may be the director, but I'm going to do this every day they do. But I believe it's 25% of the lots can be used as duplexes. So let's say that we've got 100 acres, we're going to, well, 100 acres and we're going to create, you know, 400 lots, and that 100 acres, just doing the simple math, right? Because we're going to go to R-10, and then 25 or 100 of those could actually be duplexes of the 400 that we're creating. Now, that's under our subdivision regs today. Here we have, we have 100 lots, but I, I don't think that's really a fair statement because many of the lots that we're counting are already, have already been subdivided, and some of those are HBRs, horizontal property regime lots, so there are actually multiple units on, on what was previously one lot. But, so the numbers, some were really a little bit lower than that if you're saying that we started out with some R-10 lots. How many, we said we got six identified today. Sean, can I ask you a question? How many were, were you investigating with codes? How many lots were you investigating with codes as potential duplexes?
So bear with me just one moment, I'm going to double-check my count before I answer that. It was 13. We got firm answers on a couple of those, so I believe there are 11 that we were researching, and we have some information but not adequate.
That are potential?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So it's not far off. It's not far, you're not far off, if you backed out your horizontal property regimes that already exist, and you back out the, the lots that have already been subdivided, and we could probably sit here and do that math, but I would say that's probably going to get you down somewhere closer to like 70 lots? And so, do we have any mathematicians on the, it's 25% of 70 lots? Somebody doing the math on that?
Yeah. So I didn't shop for cheese.
So 17? I can do a third of just about anything as an attorney, I'm sure you can too, but, but, so, so we're not far off that number with 11 if it were 17. So my, my point being, even our, even our own subdivision regs contemplate some limit to the number of duplexes that are within a subdivision, and you're not too far off of that number with this. And we didn't quite do the math like that, it was more of a discussion and looking at it, and are we reaching that diversity of housing type that our subdivision regulations contemplate and that, that we as a planning department contemplate, and we felt like that, that this neighborhood had. And so that's why we were comfortable with recommending the approval without further additions to it. So.
I mean, it's all depending on what planning finds in its research, but it looks like there are going to be probably a significant number, fairly significant number of properties that are going to have to be excluded anyway. And so I just hate the idea of people who don't want to be rezoned, being forced to be rezoned. So I, I would be in favor of allowing the, the various property owners to opt out.
Ms. Chair.
So I'm torn in that I keep going back to what's the best planning idea for this community. And I agree that maintaining the neighborhood context and preserving neighborhood context is critical. I also hear that everybody here on both sides is interested in preserving neighborhood context. So I'm trying to figure out if there's an alternative to the rezoning. I mean, could it be a conservation overlay or something like that? Because that might meet both sides' goals without, you know, arbitrarily down zoning people who don't want to be down zoned. You know, when I think about someone in their mid-70s losing their nest egg, we're putting a little, many 2008 financial crisis into someone's household and I personally do not feel very good about doing that. I mean, there's not opportunities to make up that lost value. So I, you know, I, I worry about that for individuals, but I, I feel like there's more consistency in terms of what the neighborhood wants. They want scale, they want to preserve the neighborhood character. There's just some people that don't want to be down zoned. And, and I think there could be other ways of getting to that.
It, I'm not sure the other tools that we would, we could use to, to accomplish, and I, I heard the same thing you heard, that often it was scale that, that people are concerned about, that it's not just the sheer number of units. As a matter of fact, we didn't really hear that much about the sheer number of units. We heard almost everything about contextually, is what's being built appropriate for what's there today. The problem is, is that, as I sit here and try to think through the right tools to accomplish that, it's difficult. I don't think that a contextual overlay works because there's already such a diversity of housing stock. It would be really difficult to work through those calculations and actually accomplish, I think, what the neighbors want. I don't think that's the right tool. And I was going to see if Catherine's still here to make sure she can't hit me with anything because there's a potential for a UDO that you might be able to put here, but I don't know that it's still going to get us, that, that's probably the closest tool that I can think of that we might use to get there, short of what the council lady has presented. But that's not what's in front of us. Let me also remind you that we can talk about the merits of those things, but it's still coming upon the council to submit the legislation to move in that direction.
Right, right. I mean, I understand we're, we're looking specifically at one item, but I just feel like there's enough concern among, and I've heard that from the commissioners, I'm not sure that there's support among all of the commissioners to go forward with this. I could see possibly a deferral to discuss with the property owners and who are concerned and, and, you know, bringing this specific piece of legislation back. But I do feel like there might, it might be worth the investment of time to think about alternatives because the neighborhood wants the same thing. It's, the majority of the neighborhood seems to want the same thing. So if we could think some more about what those tools are, maybe they, there could be a better outcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I usually don't do this, but since my name was called out, maybe not my name, but pointing to me, I have a long, well, just as many of you do, long history of, of R to RS discussions in neighborhoods. I think back in early 2000s when I was councilman for the Creve Hall area, I did downzone a major portion of the area. And I have a consistent policy. Doug and I get in these conversations about, you know, what is right. And, and the planning commission has frankly changed their position from when I was a councilman. Well, not changed its position, but its position has evolved as Nashville has evolved. And, and I feel like I was one of the, the council members that helped push that evolution of the policy. And I like where we are as a, as a commission on, on the policy level. When I, just a little context of history, and I know y'all don't want to hear this this late, but just very quickly, it was probably 1,600, I don't know if it was acres, maybe it was households. And the, the neighborhood started to change and this is down in the, near the Creve Hall area. And, and we proposed it and actually John Summers opposed it and said that I was spot zoning at the time. And I said, well, if you look into what planners are talking about in subdivisions and providing a diversity of stock, and if it's only going from single-family and doing duplexes, but not the actual changing of the zoning, the, the lots, you know, going from R10 or R20 to R40, then it's a much less of a down zone. And some courts have upheld that. I don't know if it would have stood up for challenge. I believe that it would have. But what happened was, was, you know, and, and I want to say that I adore the council lady very, very much. I respect her very much. You know, I just, like the other commissioners, I just have a hard time forcing folks to change their zoning. And you can say it's Swiss cheese or not Swiss cheese. What I think it is, is providing an option for a different type of stock. And when we did it in Creve Hall, we had about 1,600 lots and I think approximately 100, you know, had a duplex and wanted to keep the R zoning. And most of it actually, if you looked at the map at the end of the day, were at corners and at bigger lots because those were the appropriate lots that could sustain those types of duplexes. So I will tell you that I'm going to remain consistent with my thoughts and policy and everybody has different thoughts and reasonable minds can reasonably differ, but I do believe that allowing and, and opt out is very important to me. And I just, I can't support it without that. And I know that that's, I probably talked too much for the record for Doug, but he can handle that. So anyway, I do appreciate though, where we are as a planning commission, where we've evolved and, and the staff, and they've taken in those considerations. And so that's my, I, I usually don't speak, but as the chair, but I felt like I had to uphold my, my position. And I do remember John Summers saying, you're spot zoning. And he opposed in the council, but...
Chairman, I'd like...
Ms. Chairman. Yes, sir.
Yep. What I've heard here today is, there wasn't a builder that came in here and said, I want to develop this and build two units or four units, whatever. These are people that have spoken, in some cases have owned their property for as much as 42 years, with the thought, I guess, that when they got older, they were going to be able to maybe build another unit there or convert their house to a duplex. And to take that right away and I've, nobody doubts where I stand on property rights, so no need to go in there. But I think the issue is not whether it's duplexes or two units or whatever, but it's the scale. And what I've heard the other commissioners say, I think that there's a lot of doubt that taking the property rights away is the correct thing to do. So you talked about deferring, but when we defer, I don't have a problem deferring, trying to work something out, but deferring that may be, I think these two gentlemen are ready to go. So you defer, that just puts them back further. They're, Doug, you want to say something?
Yeah, I do. Commissioner, is that, I'm not sure what the problem was if they tried to come in and get a permit, but it shouldn't have been this legislation. Because if you came in prior to today, then, and you met whatever the requirements are, you should have been able to move forward, assuming you, you brought in a proper application with the proper information, then you should have been able to move forward. So I'm not sure what the problem was there. But even if you, if you defer it, then that window continues to stay open, that they, that you could, that they could still come in for an applica, and file an application and under the current zoning be allowed to proceed, proceed forward, assuming that they filed a proper application.
Okay. I guess, Council Lady, I'd ask you if we defer, is it the, I think it'd be with the feeling, my feeling, and I don't know, I can't speak with other commissioners, but what I've heard is that there's some doubt in your mind that's proper to take these property rights away. So that would go back to the issue then, the people that have spoke and maybe there's some others that weren't able to come today, but would like to opt out. So if we defer, is that something that you are open to or if not, make a motion to, to disapprove?
Since I've already had this bill filed at the council and it's, so it's been noticed to, the first, this first Tuesday of February, I think is the 6th, is the public hearing. And so, is that right? I, I don't remember the calendar. And so the understanding was that this, this bill, whatever the, whatever the staff came up with of who would be opted out or opted in, would have to be, that amendment would have to go on after the public hearing, before third and final reading. And so any changes would be made at, at that time since it's already been filed. And so if there is, I know we've had a lot of discussion and some other lots had been identified at one point about being opted out, those lots to be opted out could be opted out after second hearing. Y'all could approve this, correct me if I'm wrong, Director Sloan, y'all could approve the recommendation and then the amendment at the council would not just have these lots, but the other lots that, that we agreed, that would be opted out.
I think we'd been in the same discussion along Woodmont some two or three months ago, and we went ahead and approved it, and we were going to let them opt out after the second reading. Has that one gone through second reading?
The Wood, I, I don't know which one on Woodmont.
The Woodlong.
Biden, Marlin and Linmar.
Oh, yeah, the Marlin and, and Linmar, yes. Those were opted out and...
Some of them were allowed to opt out?
Mm-hmm. Yes, we opted the ones out on, I, I get the streets swapped. We, we opted four of them out, either on, the four on Linmar or the four on Marlin. The streets are reverse names, so I get them confused. But we opted those out on second reading.
If there was a motion made today to move forward, to approve this and it passed, then are you telling me that you would allow the people in the shaded area that wanted to opt out, you would allow them to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
If I've, if I've, if I hear from them, I'm, you know, I'm...
If what now?
If I hear from them, yes.
Okay. I'll hear from other commissioners.
Well, we need a motion.
I would still struggle with this though, because we don't know exactly how many properties we're opting out. We don't know how many, I mean, if there are 13 other lots that are non-conforming duplexes, I just get, what do we, I would like to see what the map looks like before we make that final determination that we approve it. Because it may be that it's not good planning at that point.
Doug, you said y'all were working through codes to see which ones, you know, had permits to change over to duplexes. Is the, I thought the criteria was if you had two electric meters that you would consider the duplex, because you would have had, have had an inspection to get that second meter hooked up.
So, so that's one of the reasons I can't give you absolute certainty at this point. And that is if, let's say, and I'm trying to remember when Comso came in to, do you remember what the date was?
74.
74, so, but let's say that you started using your duplex, or your property as a duplex prior to 74. And you've continued to do so continuously without more than 24 months of non-use, then you would still, we might not have a record of any permit, but you would be a legal duplex.
If you had two meters, correct?
Well, that would just, that's just one piece of evidence that we might use to show that you were a duplex. There are a lot of other things that we might...
I've heard a lot of cases recently, and I know you want a motion, but I've heard one case, someone called me off, off the road, I think it's on Sunnymeat or RD, one of those, that it was a duplex, would end up with only one meter, but it'd been a duplex until it's fixed.
That's why I said that, that electrical meter would just be one way to show that you'd done that continuously without more than 24 months gap since 74. That would be one way. You know, another way is you might show that you had two kitchens and that, you know, that you've always had that partition there. And even though there's just been one meter, that maybe there's, that, that you can show contracts where you've leased it that, that entire time. I've seen, back when I was at the legal department, I, I saw a variety of ways that people showed that they had a duplex for some period of time. So, so it's not just electric meters. But, but the scenario that I'm giving you about a property that's been used since prior to 74 as a duplex is one of the reasons we can't tell you with absolute certainty today that the six that we're identifying are the only legal duplexes within the area covered by this legislation. And that's one of the reasons why, in speaking to the council lady, that we came up with the language that I, I stated earlier, to leave that window open so that if these property owners come in and show, hey, we are a legal duplex, that she would be able to then remove them from the zoning, allow them to continue to operate as a duplex, but without it having to come back here. I was trying to set up the, the language to allow for that opportunity. But I, but what I'm hearing now, and I'm not sure how we get there, what I'm hearing now is that it's not just those, but the people who testified today in regards to their desire to, to use as a duplex. And that language, I have a difficult time imagining how the planning commission would articulate that language to then say that some properties of some number at some locations, if they chose to opt out, that the planning commission would think that that's, that you could give an approval for something like that. There's no real planning basis for doing something that you can't have any, I think to Commissioner Farr's point, there's no way that we can anticipate what that is. And as, as your planning director, I would, I would caution against doing something like that. I don't think that you, that, it say, even stating something like that creates a record that the legal department could then defend that type of legislation with that sort of open-ended approval.
Well, so can't we do a deferral and ask that they come back with a map that shows the properties that want to opt out?
So you can ask for a deferral, but the legislation's already been filed and it comes up on second reading on February 7th.
6th or 7th. So there's one meeting in between now and...
So there's one, you could defer this meeting for one meeting to, I would really want some clear statement about what it is you want us to accomplish in this one meeting deferral.
I would like to see the map of who wants to opt out.
Well, and the...
And the duplexes. And the current, the ones that are currently operating as duplexes. And I, I think we should clarify that everybody who's shown up is not saying they want to do a duplex. We have no idea what's coming down the road. Some of these folks don't even intend to sell anytime soon.
So, so we can defer one meeting, have it back before you at, at that meeting, and then, and you could render a decision and still have it back to the council lady before her second reading. You could, you can do that. But just so that, because you're, if you're deferring it, you're deferring it for a specific reason. So you're asking staff to perform some function in that period of time. So I want to be 100% clear on what you're asking us to do, if that's the direction that you're headed. And what I hear you just stated is that you want us to, to determine who all wants out in the next two weeks.
And I'll add to that, because of the staff report timeline, it would be one week for staff to figure all of that out. The staff report would have to go out next Friday.
Well, I mean...
We, we can attempt that, but...
How come we get backed into a corner because, I mean, that's, that's not, I don't know. It's a separate issue, but I mean, I feel like we're backed into a corner and we can't make a good decision because of a schedule that, we're supposed to make a planning decision here, right?
Ken, what does it mean?
You can do that and we can, we can endeavor to make that determination for you and then we can bring you our best information at the next week. I just want to articulate clearly what you're asking of us.
No, and I, and I totally, I, I mean, I kept track of how many are deferred to January 26th. I know you have a huge workload in the next two weeks. So I'm trying to figure out why do we have to actually do this and that, I mean, why can't we, isn't there an alternative with council to put it out or do something in that?
I guess first, what happens with pending legislation doctrine?
Okay, so...
If y'all deferred this with that and I still have second, I still have a bill filed, does that mean that people still can't pull, they couldn't pull their permits if they wanted to?
I'm going, let me go ahead and run through that and I have legal counsel next to me so she can correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding for, first of all, let me back up because the council lady and I are speaking about an issue that everybody may not be versed in, so I'm going to try to do a quick legal class on pending legislation. So I'm going to try to do a quick legal class on pending legislation. Pending legislation is the doctrine that states that once the legislative body has before it a piece of legislation that has all the required recommendations, so that it is on its agenda to make a decision on that issue that has been properly filed, is properly before it, then no department may issue a permit that is repugnant to that legislation that is then pending. That is to say that we, if some applicant comes in after it becomes pending, the legislation, and it is repugnant, is the word that the court's used, to the legislation that has been filed, then the permit cannot be issued. Now, that threshold where you get there is once it's back before the legislative body with all the required recommendations. If you defer it, then you have made the recommendation. So it is not back properly on the agenda for the commission with all the necessary recommendations. So the pending legislation doctrine would not apply until such time as this body made a recommendation or it, 30 days passed from the time of the original, since, from the time that it was submitted to the commission. Because once it's submitted to this commission, the clock starts to run. And we have 30 days to make a decision. If you fail to make a decision, then it is deemed approved for the purposes of the legislation to move forward. So you either, so it would not be pending if they deferred it tonight until such time as they made it or till the 30 days passed. I believe that it was filed in our office on what date?
First reading was January 3rd.
January 3rd. And that's what we, the legal department has said that that's when.
First reading is.
When our clock started to tick.
Is your clock of 30 days.
Yes. So February 3rd is when the legislative body could consider it as being approved by this commission for failure to have acted. So those are your dates, council lady, about when pending legislation doctrine would begin to apply. Unless.
That's correct. The, for an ordinance to be considered pending, it has to be introduced at council and have passed the first reading, and it has to receive the recommendations. And so if it's deferred, it won't have received the recommendations like the directors said.
That's correct, Commissioner.
I've dominated more than I needed to, but you said if we hadn't, if we don't take action tonight, if someone made application on any of these that are now RS or R, made application for a permit, does that, does that ensure them, although there may be an issue, say they make application and they say, well, Stormwater hadn't approved it and they're running behind six weeks or eight weeks or whatever, but they've made application, does that grandfather them in? Or if the 3rd of February comes and you move forward to the second reading?
You know, I think that it's actually a properly permitted issue, or a properly issued permit is when that happens. So there could be a gap. So to be clear, there could be a gap in the time, and Lord knows, it depends on the type of application you file as to how long it takes for it to go through the process. But just because you file an application, it doesn't, you don't have a properly permitted issue prior to pending legislation doctrine coming into place. So while we would accept an application today, tomorrow, all the way through the time that the legislation was pending, you wouldn't necessarily have your permit. Your permit may not come in until after it becomes pending, and then it wouldn't be issued, and they wouldn't issue it.
I'll tell you, if you made application tomorrow for a building permit, you're not going to get it for at least 45 days or so. Stormwater's so far behind.
Assuming that Stormwater's part of the application. And they would be.
And they would be.
They would be on a duplex. That's correct. So, so, right. They can file the application, but they probably wouldn't get a permit because it probably couldn't get through the process before legislation became pending.
So.
Probably. Assuming that we don't have a huge influx of inspectors over the next few weeks.
So assuming that it's really difficult to figure out which ones are operating as duplexes, could we at least in the next two weeks have a list, see this map with those who have requested to opt out?
We could put together a map that would show the ones that had communicated with us that they chose to opt out.
Yeah.
What about the ones?
The question, the question becomes, is everyone that wants to opt out, how do they know to communicate with us over the next week?
Right.
That they want to be opted out?
I think that creates.
There's absentee owner.
We don't want to get into.
Can I make a suggestion? I think, I think just from the, just how many people were here and how many people were for and against it, just knowing how many people were opposed to it, I feel like that's not just one or two people, that's more, that's more than a handful. So, you know, so I just feel like that, to me, that's enough for me to realize that that's going to be more than 25% of people that are, you know, opted out of the shaded area.
Let me, one thing.
Oh, one at a time. One, Commissioner at a time. Commissioner, all right, go ahead.
If we were to defer, my suggestion, what I've heard is would be helpful to see, rather than trying to get a comprehensive, set in stone list of who wants to opt out or not, is one of the questions that keeps coming, has come up is how many of these lots in this proposed down zone are large enough to actually have two little dwellings anyway, right? And that's something we don't know? So would that be helpful to know? I think if we knew that as a baseline piece of information.
If that's one of the things that you want us to do an analysis of, we can attempt to do that. I can tell you that there will be some guesstimates going on to pull that off.
I'm more comfortable with the guesstimate for that than I am on opt-outs versus opt-ins versus.
And I would rather give you some numbers rather than, some estimates on the number of units that could potentially have duplexes on them. But I don't feel comfortable giving you that with any degree of certainty, so.
Commissioner Tibbs.
I just want to reiterate because I see where the conversation is going. But I believe that based on the diversity that's already there, that we have the diversity already. And I'm not for people opting out and we looking at the Swiss cheese or whatever. I feel like the diversity of the community is there, and to keep the context, it's already in place. So I'm not in for the deferral to you to do that. I just want to make sure it's understood. I believe the context is there for it. I believe the units that are already there, the duplexes that are already stated, you know, all the, the sharp math that you did earlier, I believe we're there already for the diversity that makes it contextual. So I personally am not in favor of the deferral.
All right. So we need a motion from this commission.
I'll make a motion.
All right, Mr. Chairman, you recognize, make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, but the people that came tonight took their time and spoke, so they were against it, that they should be allowed to opt out.
There's been a motion to, well, and we would need to include.
So are you including the properties that, the?
If someone took their time.
So, so if I can.
And said, I live, I live in this shaded area and I do not want to be rezoned. That's indication to me that they want to opt out.
So just so that I make sure that I include everything that I understand. So it'd be a motion to disapprove as submitted, but approve with a second substitute ordinance to move all parcels containing legal duplexes and those individuals who testified today as not wanting to be included in the rezoning to be excluded from the zone change. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, so there is a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it so we can ask a few more questions.
Yeah.
If I might. Do we need to worry about?
Well, that's if you second it, hold on, before, if you second it, you know, we can't consider another motion. So we'll have to vote on that particular motion.
Can we have discussion on that motion after it's seconded?
Well, we're back to discussion if.
All right, let's just go back to discussion for me.
If there's not a second.
So.
Is there a second? Let me, seeing no second, we're back to discussion.
Um, I want to ask a question about precedent setting.
We're going to get sued here, Doug, if we don't, be careful. So we, there was not a second, so we are back to discussion.
There was no second to that motion?
No, there was no second to that. Let me be very crystal clear, the record. There is no second for that particular motion. So we're back to discussion. I am, I am sure. I am looking around and seeing no, and so we're back to discussion.
May I ask a question?
Yes, you recognize, Council, sorry.
Thank you, thank you. I just, I mean, to me, in this particular case, that doesn't seem like an unreasonable motion, based on the very extended conversation we've now had. But I do have a question about precedent setting. I think there are other cases where that, that type of response would not be appropriate. And so that makes me a little bit nervous, which is why I hesitate to second.
And maybe I can, because of the conversations happened so far, maybe we can help with some calculations by everyone. Sean? And Sean, how long have you been with us?
Since October.
October. It gets easier.
No, it doesn't.
So any chance someone's kept up with exactly which properties people have testified on tonight? You working on that right now? Because what I would like to do is I'd like to understand that if we looked at the properties that we are investigating today, and then we add to that the number of units that have been testified and they've asked to be removed tonight, if that is closer to the 25% of the 100 units that are being considered in this rezoning. And if so, that certainly gets us even closer to matching what our subdivision regs imagine is a proper balance of housing types. To Sean?
One thing I would like to clarify as we're discussing this is that there, it's easy to talk about number of parcels, but existing duplexes actually have several parcel numbers assigned to them in many cases. And so.
Right. I understand, I understand the, I understand the distinction you're making, but nevertheless.
So if we're just talking about the parcels and not individual parcel numbers, there are a total of 17 that either have been identified as staff, as legal duplexes, or that we are in the process of investigating further. I would look to, yes, I count six lots and then one additional lot that doesn't have an address on it. So I'm going to go find that person.
Okay.
Five minute recess while we discalculate the numbers for that.
Well, why don't y'all do the calculations, because I don't think they're done talking.
Let me add a quick, quick, hold on. Yeah. Figure out the, I'll get you one second, Jeff. Figure out the number, and then we'll go to Commissioner Haines.
Quick clarification, I agree with you on the surface, but there are a lot of people who might have objected via email, who because of work schedules or other reasons, just couldn't possibly be here. And so do we have to add the email objections and the people who couldn't be here to that opt-out?
I, again.
I'm asking that rhetorically, because I don't know the answer to that.
Well, let me, let me just say that, I would go back to my earlier statement. And that is, the planning commission and the planning department, we're supposed to make decisions based on good planning principles. And it's impossible to make that statement, to leave the door open to people we don't even know that might or might not be out there, and then say that that's a good planning position.
So we're at the position of discussion. Is there another motion? We really need to.
Before we have an, oh, can I make, you want a motion before they give us the numbers?
Hold on.
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Hagen, dear, hold on one second.
I want to make just one more point on Commissioner Haines.
Yeah, please, we're in discussion.
On his point. Because my discomfort with the motion was the fact that you penalize anyone who's not here. And if I were not able to be here because I couldn't find childcare, and then I found out that because I wasn't here, my property then was not excluded from an opt-out provision because I didn't speak or didn't like to speak in public, that's just, it's not a precedent we need to, I feel we need to set as a commission. Otherwise, we're going to have people standing rafters to basement every night just to make sure they don't get excluded from, I mean, just think it's a bad precedent.
That's a very good point. Commissioner Hagen, I mean, Commissioner Diaz, sorry.
I think I'd like to make a motion, but, but I'm kind of scared to.
Well, hold on, let's see. Why don't you wait one second, Commissioner? Let's see if we can get the calculations.
So I have two calculations for you, clarifying that this is based on the outline of parcels, not total number of parcel numbers. But since we're on the fly, there are 75 large pieces of land here, whole parcels. If we count the duplexes that staff has been able to identify and has hatched on the map and the individuals who spoke here tonight with a desire to opt out, then, and excluded those parcels, that is 18.6% of the.
Hold on.
Total.
Carrie's telling me there are two more. Sorry, hold on.
Oh, okay.
So, sorry, hold on a second. So seven divided by seven, so you're going to add two more to that one.
You know, I appreciate that. I think we're close enough.
Okay, all right. So tell them.
Close enough for government work?
Based on where we were, if you took the duplexes that staff has hatched on the map and the individuals who opted out, we're at 19%, I'll give you a round number, of the area that would be excluded. If you included duplexes staff has hatched, the additional parcels that we are still investigating, or we don't have conclusive evidence on as to their duplex status, and those who have spoken wishing to opt out, you are at 29% of the area that would be excluded, of the parcels that would be excluded. Rough numbers.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? And Commissioner Diaz, you did have the floor and you were going to make a motion. Don't be scared.
I'm changing my mind.
Oh, okay. Is there, is there a motion? We need to have a motion so that we can all go home. I will tell you, though.
Can I ask Council Lady a question?
Yes, please.
Is there something time sensitive on your legislation? Much like we're talking about a deferral, council bills get deferred all the time. So to Jessica's point, can we defer your bill so that we have more time to get our already overworked staff more time to answer all these questions?
I think what's difficult is when we have more meetings, we have less turnout and we have less input. And this is something that, again, I originally had asked to get drafted. I was literally at the beach the week before the election in November. And because the December deadline was the next filing deadline, it got filed on December 1st with the, I think, five other million applications that you got on that December 1st deadline. And so the thing is, is a lot of these neighbors have been involved in this for, at least since December, a lot of them involved in it to the prior Woodlong rezonings. And I'm personally thinking that I probably should have just circled my whole district and started with a bigger map instead of coming to y'all with smaller streets, which I thought was better. So I'll rethink that strategy next. But I think that this has been going on for a while, and a lot of neighbors are nervous whether they're going to be in or going to be out. And I think that a resolution of up or down might be, might be timely. Now, if y'all feel like you would like to defer it, I am completely at the will of the commission. I've heard a lot of good back and forth, and I think council members get put in the position of, I basically played public defender, right? I was asked to file this application, and so I'm filing it, and I'm defending the position of the majority of the neighbors that I have heard of, heard from. And so I'm basically up here as, as the public defender, the same way as when I'm at the BZA and things like that, so.
Nate, thank you, Council Lady. I mean, we understand that, too. We definitely understand. So maybe if somebody would like to make a motion, if we.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, well, can I ask one last question?
Okay. One last question. We're in discussion. Hold that thought, Commissioner Diaz, and then.
Is there?
Vice you.
There really is no other option. Her point that she could take a big. Is there, there really is no other option, her point that she could take a bigger area? Because I feel like if we're going to have this again on Kenner and Woodmont Circle and that's coming in a month, you know, or whatever, we're going to we're going to have a similar conversation. So if it was a larger geographic area that we were looking at, are there other tools that could be used? I mean, do we have no other tools other than down zoning to control design in a neighborhood?
Well, no, I listed off some of the others.
Yeah, I know.
So.
But we can't use any of those? They don't they wouldn't work?
Well, as I said, I don't think a contextual overlay would get you there.
Right.
But a UDO might. You know, I'd have to sit down, we have to look at design guidelines and we have to look at what the housing stock is today and of course, what would be the elements that you want to include in UDO, things that we do normally with a UDO. But I so I can't say whether that would get us to where the council ladies and the and the community is trying to get. But that would be a tool that that might accomplish that. As the planning director would hope that you wouldn't try to downzone an entire district. I don't think that's appropriate. But, you know, there might be another that might be the right tool. I can't think of another one that actually would would be able to do that. I think that would be the right tool to accomplish it, except for this tool.
Okay. So I mean, I go so I just I know we have to vote on this and make a motion on this, but I feel like there the neighborhood is closer together and we're dividing the neighborhood by, you know, we're creating hardship on people that we might not have to create by doing this. And so I'm not, for that reason, I feel like more time could be spent to figure figure that out. If we can't figure that out without approving or rejecting this, then I would probably have to disapprove it and hope that we could come back with something different. But I or have a deferral and try to get some of this other information figured out and figure it out what it looks like if everybody who said they want to opt out did opt out. I just feel like there's too many unknowns for me to feel good about definitely just approving it, even though I totally support what the neighborhood wants. I'm in favor of what the neighborhood wants. I'm just not sure that this is the way to get there.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, we had Commissioner Diaz and but Council Lady, do you want to go?
I have a procedural question. That might be.
Okay, that's.
So is it is it possible to re refer this back to the planning commission after the public hearing when we've had time to talk about the other opt outs with the hope that we're close to that 25%?
Doug? So it the commission could make a this is this is going to be fun. The commission could make a recommendation tonight and, you know, request that that the council lady re refer it back after second reading and to consider and have staff continue to investigate who wants to be opted out and just in case people aren't here tonight and how that affects our recommendation regarding where the opted out properties are and the the number of opted out properties and whether that is an appropriate use of the land from a planning perspective. And then have the commission consider it with that information and give a second recommendation prior to third reading. That's an opportunity to get a recommendation back before the body. Now, as I say, as I walk myself through that procedurally, I do have to question and I'm not sure this is a fair question to throw at legal counsel tonight, but then I do question if you have a recommendation back before the body and then the body legislative body then re refers it back to the planning commission, do you lose pending legislation when it's re referred back? That I'm not sure of. I'm not sure whether pending legislation survives that re referral or not. And I and I know the one case that really speaks on this issue, I don't think contemplates that. So I'm not entirely sure and I'm familiar with that memo from the former legal director and I'm pretty sure it doesn't contemplate that scenario. So can we ask that it be re referred? Yes. Will pending legislation doctrine still apply after it's re referred? I couldn't tell you. I can't give you a definitive answer on that tonight. And quite frankly, I think it would take the legal department time to do research and look at other jurisdictions because I don't think that that scenario has been contemplated by the courts. So.
Commissioner Diaz?
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to disapprove so that you can plan a new system, a new way to approach this because I feel that with taking out more properties, you're not going I don't think that you will the neighbors will get what they want as a whole anyway. I don't think that the whole neighborhood is going to look like what they want it to look like because some people will be out. So hopefully this will help everyone else come up with something better and something that will make everyone happy later on. I just think that this is not the way.
That's a proper motion. Is there and there's a second. So the motion is to disapprove and there's been a second, any other discussion? All in favor of the seeing no other discussion? All in favor of disapproval, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no?
No.
How many nos? Two nos? Two nos. Okay. And this item is disapproved. We're on to item 30, historic. Everybody voted? There were two nos and everyone else was a yes for disapproval. Is that well, let's go ahead, just.
There was a question now raised and that causes another problem with our record. So so we need to clarify this.
We will clarify. We just let's show hands of.
All in favor.
All in favor.
Of the disapproval.
Of the disapproval.
Okay.
Seven to two. It's the same vote that I I had assumed.
Okay.
Before. Proof. It's on video. Item 30.
No, no report.
Historic, no report. Parks, Commissioner Diaz, no report. Executive Committee. We didn't have a report, we didn't have a meeting. We no report from the executive committee. We've already, Doug, do you have a directors, any directors items?
I want to just want to point one thing out that that y'all wouldn't be able to know because of you're not involved in the everyday operations in the planning department. But there's this has been a real culture shift within Metro that's been great to see with MTA, RTA, the planning department and Public Works, all working much closer together as we continue to try to work through mass transit and in particular downtown and how we're going to work through how we get our mass transit in and out of downtown. But I've been in several meetings over the last few weeks on that issue and there is a common vision that I will tell you that is being driven by Nashville Next and the community plan in a way that I've never seen before. And it is and I met with the mayor on this, we all met with the mayor on this yesterday and everybody said the same thing, that everybody seems to have the same vision and is really helping us to move the ball much faster than we ever expected in the past. So I just thought it passed that long.
That's excellent. What about council? Anything, Council?
I'll just say real briefly in case anybody's wondering, there was a short term rental bill that was on public hearing last last week and there's been a lot of email coming into the council. So I know that this body had a long discussion about that and appreciated the fact that the current bill only does two things, one of which is to move it into Division 17 so that this group will always have input on that, which I think is a good thing. And then it fixes a definition. A lot of other amendments have been proposed. I'm not sure where those will go. We're having a special planning committee meeting on the 23rd to sort of hash through and try to come up with a somewhat coordinated way to move forward with that. So I suspect that y'all will hear about that again. I know you've gotten some emails, so I just wanted to give you an update on that.
Thank you, Council Lady. Anything else? No. I don't see anything else. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, can I make an announcement, I guess? Brian and I were were invited to be on a panel to it's called Seat at the Table. It's January 31st for minorities to get help or, you know, get encouraged to participate in commissions and boards of Metro.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Or adjourn?
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville dot go.